I'd now like to call this November 3, 2011, Cookeville City Council Meeting to order. Could we get a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright, here, all present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in thy God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, before we get started tonight, I think we have someone that would like to address the council. We're going to go ahead and let him do that. We do try to keep things to three minutes if we can.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Councilmen. I'm Leland Goolsbee. I'm used to work with the city. And I'm a kind of feller. When I clock in down there for the city, the city owns me till I clocked out. I look at this man ever walk beside two shoes. Everybody said I done more work than their two men they seen. And Clyde Presley, I worked a little while, he said he'd burn me. He didn't like me. And I walked in his office the next morning, I told him, I said, Clyde, I heard you said you'd burn me. I picked myself on the chest like this, I said, I'll die before you burn me. And I like to die. I wanted had the heat stroke. I had it right in front of the first Tennessee bank. Me and Timmy, uh, Presley, I'll call him, he's a boss there, and I, he, uh, me and him was a morning. We went from the square to the interstate and back from seven o'clock till nine o'clock. I asked Clyde that morning, I was having the presley in my left lung. I asked him to give me a easy job that day. There's going to stockpile gravel. I asked him, let me drive a truck, stockpile gravel. He said, no, you're going to push that lumber. I said, Clyde, I don't feel like it. I said, let me take a sick day or vacation day one. He said, no, you done clocked in, you can't take it. He said, I said, well, I'm going home anyhow. He says, if you go home, I'll write you up. So that's when I had my stroke. And he followed me up to hospital homeless. He went in my private billfold and got my insurance card and registered me in the hospital on my private insurance card. I wasn't working for the city for the money. I was working firm for the benefits. I could work a week and make more, and you just paid me in a month. I was private contractor. I contracted on the side. I hired the boys at the city to help me on the week evenings and weekends. And Clyde didn't like that. He tried to get them to not work for me. I paid them more money, and the city is the plan. And so I, I did, I didn't get to draw no workman's come. And Clyde's out, he's done some bad stuff to me. I've let him get away with it. And he's out telling people now and laughing at me, at him and some more that called I couldn't draw workman's come. So I told my doctor about it. He wrote me a letter. He said, you go down and sign up for your disability. I'm seventy-four-year-old now. I went old enough to draw social security then. You can figure it back some, some of the longer, you can look at your books, he said. And he's aggravating me bad. My doctor said, they don't see how I'm living. I laid in St. Thomas Hospital, it's over his stupidiness. I laid in critical care four and a half weeks. They get me up to die four times. Since I had my stroke, I've had three more strokes. And I, let me say, excuse me, it's too many. I'm about to get to crying.
Well, pass the three minutes, Mayor. Mr. Goolsbee, we do appreciate you coming tonight, and we want you to-
If you just can't do, I've been to Mr. Shep, I've made appointment with Mr. Shepley three times, and he's canceled it three times.
That's not true.
I've talked to the man over Public Works, and he sort of made fun of me. So if you just can't stop him, my doctor says they don't see how I'm living. And if you just can't talk to him and stop him, I can stop him. It might be, I don't know where it'll be, but I'm going to stop it one way or another. Do you just know how Clyde Presley got his job with the city?
No, sir.
I never really know, ain't you?
That's enough, Mr. Goolsbee.
Yeah, Mr. Goolsbee, I mean, we do appreciate you coming and-
Well, let me say something more.
You're free to come any time and talk to us, but we do have procedures and grievance, and grievance boards to go, to go in front of, and complaint departments you can go in front of.
I never tell you, I'll talk a little louder, I'm hard.
We do have procedures to go through when there is a complaint like this.
Okay.
And we would have to ask you to do that. This, this, you're welcome to come any time and speak with us, but this is not necessarily the forum to air this. We would need you to come to City Hall.
Well, I never could get appointment. I had appointment with Mr. Shepley three times, they canceled it.
Well, we can set up an appointment.
This is the only place I know to come to.
We can set up an appointment.
This is my last resort.
We can, we can set that appointment up for you tonight before you leave, if you'd like.
I appreciate it.
Okay, we will do that. We'll set that up for you.
You going to do it now?
We're going to set the appointment.
Miss, Miss Gail is going to help you.
She'll, she'll set that appointment up for you, okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, thank you for coming.
I appreciate it.
All right, now on to, on to item one, Consider Approval of Agenda as Presented. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
And old business, item two, Consider Approval of Minutes, a council meeting held on October 20th, 2011.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to the consent agenda. Item three, Set a Date, 12/1/2011, for a public hearing on Ordinance 111119, resoning 2001 Fisk Road from HM Heavy Machinery, Heavy Manufacturing to CI Commercial Industrial Mixed Use. And item four, Set a Date, 12/1/2011, for a public hearing on Ordinance 111120, Annexation of South Willow Avenue Area and Resolution R111116, Adopting Plan of Services for Same. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Seen none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to the new business portion of the meeting. Item, item five, Consider Declaring Vehicles and Equipment as Surplus. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, there are a few items that various departments are no longer utilizing. We'd ask that these be declared surplus. In the, I'll just go through them real quick, there's just a handful of items. There's three vehicles in our meter-reading customer service department. Two of those are pickup trucks that basically have major mechanical issues. A Crown Victoria vehicle that was handed down from the police department, and so those are three items in the customer service meter-reading department. There's another vehicle in the police department that, again, has miscellaneous mechanical problems. We'd like to declare it surplus. The fire department has a Kenwood radio repeater with a 100-watt power amp that would be declared surplus as well. We've updated that equipment with, with new equipment. We also have a 2005 John Deere mower in the Leisure Services Maintenance Department that needs to be declared as surplus. And in the gas department, we have thirty-eight American gas meters and sixteen Rockwell gas meters that are thirty-five years old, and we'd like to declare those as surplus as well. And I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
All right, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the council?
Well, I think that all of this shows that we use our equipment. And we want to make sure that we've gotten our money's worth out of things before we put them on the surplus list.
Anybody else? Comments from the audience? Seen none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. All right, item six, Consider Rejecting All Bids Received and Rebidding the Water Plant Improvements. Water Quality Control Department, sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I want to go through a little bit how we got to this point before we get into the actual bid process, or where we got to, and it'll take just short and sweet, hopefully. Basically, water treatment plant was out at Old City Lake in the 1970s and was, or pre-seventeen, was moved down to Center Hill Lake and was built, and there was a seven-and-a-half million gallon plant was moved there in 1970. And at that time, there was a thirty-inch water line that was brought into town to serve Cookeville. In nineteen eighty-three, the plant was expanded due to growth and was doubled inside, so the capacity was doubled from seven-and-a-half million gallons to fifteen million gallons. So as Cookeville continued its growth in the eighties and the nineties, we started the planning process and looking at what we would need to accomplish to increase the capacity at the water plant and to be able to transport the water into town at that point. We knew we'd need to increase the pipe capacity, we'd need to rework the electrical at the intake, we'd need to do the pumps at the plant, and then at the last portion, we'd need to add treatment capacity at the plant. So we started doing that in steps over time. And so our first project we did, which was a multitude of projects, we brought a new thirty-inch water line out of Center Hill Lake, up to the plant, and then from the plant into town, and built a new ten-million-gallon water tank. That was a ten-and-a-half-million-gallon, a ten-and-a-half-million-dollar project. And then we accomplished that from 1999 to 2003. Our next step of the project phase was to do some renovations at the plant. That was, that consisted of redoing the lagoon systems to be able to get it, the solids handling capacity down there for an expansion in the future when we need to do the expansion. We did that project in 2005, and that was a one-and-a-half-million-dollar project. We next moved down to the intake, we had to get the intake brought up to speed and capacity there. So we moved to the intake, and we redid it, we replaced the chemical building there, we added an electric building outside of the pump room, we did all the pumps and all the electrical, and basically refurbished it and brought it up to where it has the capacity of twenty-two-and-a-half million gallons, and easily brought up to thirty million gallons in the future when that's needed to be done. And that was accomplished in 2007, and was about a five-million-dollar project. So now we're at the next phase of the project, and that's at the plant. And at this portion, we're going to start redoing the 1970s, the lab, the operations centers, and all the stuff that's in there that needs to be refurbished, upsized, the electrical, the pumps, all of that will be replaced in this project. And then the last, after we get this project finished, the next phase, when we need it, would be add capacity. So that's what this project that we bid, currently bid out, was to do, at the plant, was the replace the electrical, the pumping capacity, all of that stuff to get, to get us for our next phase. And so what does that consist of? That was going to, we were going to redo the operations building, all the laboratory, bring it up to date, bring all of the instrumentation up to today's standards. We're going to have to build a new pump room, and a new electric room, and a new clear well to handle all of that. This is the front of the building, you can't see, and this is sort of the architect's rendering of what it would look like at the front once the additions and so forth were made. And so that was the project that we're talking about. We took bids, let me get my bids sheet out here, on September, and opened those bids on September 29th. Had three, three bidders, W. Rogers, W. O. Construction, and Southern Contractors, and we received the three bids. After we opened those bids, we started evaluating the bids, and, and the estimated project cost was, we had estimated the project to cost six million dollars. Our lowest bid was seven million, four-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars. We were planning on to construct this project over two budget cycles. We had included three million dollars in the current budget year, and we were planning to put three more, three million dollars in next year's budget. And so I think we've got four options to look at. We've looked at them, we could accept the bids as they are, ship some monies around and try to go ahead and bid it, or build a project. We could make cuts and negotiate with the low bidder. We could make cuts, ask for deduct prices from all three bidders that did submit the bids, or we could reject all bids and redesign and rebid the project. I've talked with the city manager and the city attorney at length, and after those conversations, it'd be my recommendation to reject the bids and let us go back, redesign the project, try to cut some cost out, and rebid the project. There will be some additional cost if we do that. There'll be some engineering cost to go back and do some redesigning, and some modifications to the current project. I would have to bring back an amendment to that engineering contract to you at some future date after we get that hammered out. There's always the possibility that that project prices can go up. You don't know. We're planning, we've identified quite a few, quite a few things we can cut out and pair out of the project. So we think we can, you know, cut some substantial savings in the project, but you never know. Our plan would be to redesign the project and then put it out for bids and open bids sometime in January, and I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have a motion for approval on that?
I move that we reject all the bids and have additional redesign and building costs. Oh, I got confused. I move that we reject, reject the bids and have Mr. Kelly go forward with looking at redesign, is that the correct word?
Yeah, redesign the project.
Redesign the project and-
And put it out to rebid.
And start new bidding.
I second that.
Do you have questions, comments from the council?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Ronnie, of course, I already had a chance to talk to you about this, so I feel pretty good about being up to speed with this, because, again, this is area that, I mean, what do I know about water, other than I turn the tap on, it works. But when, when you rebid a project like this, I mean, you remarked that there's going to be costs involved with that, do you have an idea of what those costs are going to be to rebid?
Well, we've got some preliminary numbers from the engineering company. They're, they're throwing out in twenty-thousand-dollar range. We haven't came to an agreement on those costs yet.
Okay, twenty K, but, and we're still, I mean, we still don't know, we're hoping, and it's your best guess, and from the best advice you can get, that bid hopefully will come back lower, so hopefully our twenty thousand dollars will go, go a long way in-
Yeah, based on what we've looked to cut out, that we had had some, we had put in the project some future treating processes we felt was coming down the pipe, and how we could just place that in the project now. We can take that out and put it in at a later date. We can change some laboratory cabinets around, which has got some savings. There was, we've identified quite a few, quite a bit of amount of savings, and there was some, appears to be some confusion on the electrical submittals, so we think there, there's a chance to save quite a bit of money if the prices hold.
If the prices are low, yeah. And that's been, and that's been changing, we know that, realize that changes from-
That changes every day.
Month to month.
Yes.
Okay, well, have you, I guess the other question I had is that, have you had an opportunity, I know this is a complicated project, and there's no project that's exactly the same, but have you had an opportunity to talk to other like places that may be going through the same thing and have kind of an idea of what we're looking at? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Yeah, I'm sort of not clear on the question.
Well, it's just, the question is, have you had a chance to talk to somebody else that's done the same thing? And is, I guess, because, because if, maybe they'd say, you know, that's a pretty low bid anyway, or maybe, I mean, if they-
Well, I mean, I think, I think our engineer will tell you that they were, it appears to be a competitive-priced bid. They're sort of lumped up together, so it appears that way. It's just, it was out of our budget that we had budgeted, and out of the engineer's estimate. Now, the engineer's estimate was low, and there's a reason, you know, it got low throughout the project for whatever reason, but the estimate was low.
Well, and the fact that the city attorney and the city manager both recommend that we start from scratch, I think that's what we need to do. Or not, we're not starting from scratch, we're just going back and reevaluating, and definitely, you know, it's been my experience that when the lawyer speaks, it's usually good to listen.
Does this redesign, does it have any effect on, you know, the future expansion, or, you know?
No, these are, the items we would try to take out won't have a bearing on, there's certain things that's got to be done.
Right.
And, you know, this, what's being built now will be there for fifty years, just like it was built in the seventies. You know, in fifty years from now, somebody else will be upgrading and doing things. So there are certain aspects of the project that you can't cut out.
Right.
There is some things that we could, that were pointed out, that we make and change and look at, do a little bit different way, that would have some cost savings. And so we've taken a look at that and think there is some potential for cost savings.
Anyone else? Personally, I believe, you know, if it's coming in at 1.4 million dollars, you know, over what's budgeted, then you go back to the drawing board. But that's me. Any questions, comments from the audience? Yes, sir, if you'd just come to the podium and identify yourself.
Thank you. Thank you, my name is Warren Rogers. I am the president and majority stockholder of W. Rogers Company, the low bidder on the project. Ten seconds about W. Rogers Company. We're, our market area ranges from Cincinnati to Atlanta, from Charlotte to Memphis. Cookeville is right dead center of our market area. We're the largest municipal utility contractor in the state of Tennessee and have been for five years. And we've built many water treatment plants and wastewater plants within a forty, fifty-mile radius of where we stand right now, including Salina, McMinn County, McMinnville, Warren County, Tallahassee, Smyrna, goes on and on. We, our experience, when we bid this project a month ago, I can tell you that this is a very tight and competitive bid. The market right now for contractors is very tight, and margins are very low. For that reason, you bid this project at the correct time. In the thirty days since we bid this job, what we've seen is an increase in market indexes for things like copper, cement, certainly fuel has, has gone up a little bit. We are really concerned that a sixty-day, putting this off for sixty days and bidding again, there are things beyond our control, all of our control, that, that could affect the price of a rebid of this project in sixty days. You know, in Israel, they're talking about taking out the Iran nuclear arsenal. That, if that happens, oil prices will jump forty dollars a barrel overnight. That will have a profound effect on this project. We see cement costs going up, copper costs have, when this job bid, we're really at a regularly, a low price, and then they've since gone up a little bit. The other thing is, there's three really large projects in our, in this marketplace that are going to bid in the month of January, all over between twenty-five and thirty-five million dollars, in Hendersonville, in Knoxville, and in Pigeon Forge. That's going to serve to drive up the price of steel and galvanizing and paint, and wood, and everything else that's in this immediate market. From where I sit, also what's happened since this job bid, you have asked through your engineer, W. Rogers Company, to price out some deductive alternates or some, some credits to the contract, and we have done that. We've also offered some value engineering of our own. In essence, it's our, it's, it's items that we saw in the project that we felt could be reduced in cost. We have offered all of that up, and we understand that you, through your engineers, are interested in some things and not interested in others, and actually going to add some other things in. But in balance, it looks like all of that will reduce the cost of this project between two and three hundred thousand dollars. So that would become, get from seven point four to about seven, between seven and seven point one million dollars. The original budget for this project was six million dollars, but like all projects, things get added on. And I think it was referred to that this, what's what we call in the industry scope creep. And added, things got added on, and it's my understanding that internally, you're looking to increase the budget of this project to between seven and seven point one million dollars. Well, an award of the project to W. Rogers Company and a change order for negative two to three hundred thousand dollars for those items that we've already priced will get you right there. It will get you right there at your budget, and you're not at the mercy of what's going to happen in our local market and in the world market in the next sixty days. So my advice is that you award this project to W. Rogers Company, take advantage of the intellectual property that we have offered, that by the way, is, is going to get designed, things that we offered up are going to get designed back into the project if it gets rebid. And we think, we just advise you that, we think you should award the project while you have a bird in the hand. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Rogers, thank you very much.
Okay.
Any questions from anyone? I appreciate you coming down here, I really do.
Sure.
And I appreciate you-
We'll ride it home here.
I appreciate you, you know, submitting your bid, as competitive as it was. It's just, you know, my belief, if, if we can go back to the drawing board and look for some more cuts, we need to do our due diligence to do that and take the time to do that.
Right.
And I understand, and I appreciate what you're saying, and I appreciate the forethought there.
Right.
Because I wasn't thinking along those lines.
Right.
But I was thinking 1.4 million, we need to look at it, look at it again, and if so be it, that it's not going to be close enough to the six, so be it, we'll move forward. But, you know, I believe we do need to take our time on this, and, but I do appreciate everything you brought to the table.
If, for more reference, you could talk to the city of Alcoa or the city of Johnson City. In both those occasions, we've taken projects that were awarded to us, that, in the case of Johnson City, from twenty-eight million to twenty-one million, in the case of Alcoa, from twenty-nine million to twenty-three million. And those were both awarded, and then a change order afterwards. So I think that would be the best move.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anyone else? And of course, we're going to rebid it, and we want you to be as involved as you want to be in the rebid.
There's, you know, the market is such, there's a hundred million dollars of projects bidding in, in January and February, and this, this project is very, very important to us, but I just think the market conditions are changing now. So again, you have the bird in the hand.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the audience? Seen none, we have a motion on the floor to reject all bids, redesign and rebid the project, correct? All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. On to the portion of the meeting, the hearing from officers, councilmen, or city manager, and I do believe we have an extra item, is receive a report from the Sports Council Task Force, and I believe that is Mr. Otis Phillips, he's going to fill us in- task force, and I believe that is Mr. Otis Phillips, he's going to fill us in on what's going on over there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and esteemed council. First, I'd like to express my appreciation on behalf of myself and the, and the task force that's been working on this project. It's just been an honor and a pleasure to be involved at this point. We think there's a tremendous amount of opportunity here for this community. We just, you know, I can't say enough about, about the excitement that's been generated in this group by working on this. We started, this started, this is really kind of an offshoot of the success that this community has had with the Blue Cross Bowl and the T double S double A. I think a lot of people, we raised a lot of eyebrows with the success that the community had in executing that event, and continues to do so. And I think we started thinking about, well, what else is out there? What other opportunities do we have to, to bring something like, to bring those kinds of events to this community? Mr. Shipley, I think, brought a resolution to the council to form a sports authority last year, and in, or this past, past few months, and then in June, we formed a task force to basically study it. We had five basic objectives when we, when we got together. We wanted to really study what a sports authority was. We wanted to come up with a mission statement for this group. We wanted to set some long-term and short-term goals and directives. For the, for the sports authority, we wanted to come up with a county-wide inventory, a preliminary inventory of assets, as well as activities that were taking place in this community that might be opportunities in the future. And we wanted to put together some formal structure for this organization to work through. And the bottom line really was, was what is, what was the best type of organization to serve this community with where we are right now? Next slide. Here was basically what came out of, out of the work that we did. First, there's a lot of information out there. We're not reinventing the wheel here by any, by any means. We took the state code for sports authorities and studied that and looked at it. We went to information from the National Sports Commission. We actually had one of our members attend a couple of regional conferences. We took what other counties and other cities are doing throughout the state, and several, and a few, not many, but a few that actually have sports authorities in place. Bottom line was, after really just looking at the issue and studying it, we came back and really decided that we needed to walk before we ran. We really felt like a sports authority was overkill for what we wanted to do right now. The document's about that thick, and it takes a lawyer to read it. It's obvious that it was written for something much more substantial. It talks about issuing bonds, it talks about dealing with professional sports franchises and that sort of thing. So we really wanted to come back and come up with a, with an organization that we felt like was, was really more attuned to where we were right now, and would give us an opportunity to morph into something more substantial later on down the road. As a result of that, we were able to come up with an inventory of sporting events and venues throughout the county. We came up with our objectives and goals for this group. We actually took several different comments and suggestions and ideas, and consolidated that into a fairly consolidated mission statement. The mission of the Cookeville-Putnam County Sports Council is to strategically solicit, create, and support sporting events to positively impact the economy and the quality of life in Putnam County and the region, and to establish our county as a major sporting event destination. We also were able to draft some preliminary operating procedures for this group and formalize it somewhat, rather than just being a committee of some sort. And last but not least, we were able to bring in, we were able, through this group and some outside sources, we were able to come up with a very, very impressive list of individuals that we feel like could serve on this, on this commission and do an outstanding job. So our recommendations are, number one, one of the things that we talked about early on, and which we've been able to accomplish by doing a sports authority, was to have a 501(c)(3). One of the, initially, our thinking was, especially with the advent of the T double S double A Blue Cross Bowl, we were going, we felt like if we had a 501(c)(3) place in place, we would be able to realize some tax savings and advantages by doing that. We've decided to pursue that, and we have, we're looking, we're pursuing legal advice right now. We will do that as part of the chamber and under the Convention and Visitor Bureau umbrella. We will form the Cookeville-Putnam County Sports Council as a separate committee under the Chamber CNBB. It will have its own operating procedures, its own board of directors, its own group, its own committee. We have a recommended list of members for the executive committee, and as a matter of fact, we have our chairman, who is Clarence Smith. He's accepted to chair this, this group, and we have presented him with a, an extensive list of names of people that, like we said earlier, have expressed an interest or that the committee came up with. There will be seven members of the executive committee. They will have staggered terms, and they will be appointed by a nominated committee going forward. In addition to that, there will be an additional board of directors made up of 10 individuals, and they will be made up of representatives who, who have an interest in all different types of sporting aspects in the community. So we want a very diverse group there. And we also would like to recommend that we have a group of ex officio individuals or group in this, as a part of this, as a part of this commission. And those would be people throughout the county, Tennessee Tech, anybody that will have, will touch this, anybody that this touch, that this group will touch in terms of facilities use, scheduling, et cetera. So it could be people from the Board of Education, people from Tennessee Tech, people from the county, the city, et cetera. And last, we are recommending that this sports commission be a part of the CNBB and be a subgroup of that, of the Chamber of Commerce under the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Next slide. And this is what it looks like. We have the Chamber of Commerce, we have our CNBB, we have the, we will have the Cookeville-Putnam County Sports Council, I think I said commission, I apologize, council. Sports Council, their executive, seven-member executive committee, and then we will have the board of directors. Under that, we will have our T double S double A steering committee, someone is being pretty, I guess, opportunistic here in putting the basketball on there as well, and other youth sports. So in other words, if we, if we were to bring in another T double S double A, Blue Cross Bowl type of event, we would probably have a group that would, that would be the operations piece of that, that would serve under the sports council in terms of managing that type of event. We're excited. We think there's tremendous amount of upside opportunity here to bring money generating events to our community, youth sports, any type of competition along those lines, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. And I believe you, you think the way I do, we will get the basketball turned. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions, comments?
I have some questions, but whether a motion gets...
Okay.
I move to rescind the previous resolution approving the sports authority and to approve the sports council as recommended by the task force.
I'll second that.
All right. Any questions or comments?
I do. Of course, Otis, thanks for, that committee doing a lot of work. I always, I mean, you guys uncovered every rock, and I really appreciate that. I was first kind of surprised, because we had, I'd gotten my hands wrapped around the sports authority, was very excited about it. So I was a little bit concerned when it completely changed over, but after I took, took time to read this and ask some questions, et cetera, I feel very comfortable with this. I do think this is a step in the right direction. One of the things I really do like, that I'm kind of learning as a city council member now, that is that this council gives us a tool that takes all the interested parties in this, working, gets them working together. That T double S, or having the T double S double A football championships is a, is a great example of how, what can happen when everybody's working together, Tennessee Tech, the citizens, the city council, the Putnam County. So I'm, I like this, I like this, because it's a great tool that can allow us to do that. So I have to agree with our mayor that I, I don't think we need to settle for basketball, I think we need to settle for lots of other things. And I think we're, with this tool, we're ready to do that. So I really appreciate you guys setting this up with the directors, the executive committee, and it just, it looks really good. I really appreciate the work you've done.
And thank you very much. And one thing that we did learn, there's no, there's no perfect organization. Everybody does something a little bit different. You talk to Knoxville and Nashville, and you look at all these different groups that are out there, they're all different. But I want to echo exactly what you said, and that is, the one thing that I learned from serving on the, in Blue Cross Bowl, is that there is just an incredible amount of cooperation between the university, and the city, and the county, and the chamber. It's just, it's ideal for this, this type of, this type of group and this type of project. As a matter of fact, other organizations that we talked to were just kind of envious, because they said, you know, we'd like to do something, but we can't work with these people, or da-da-da. So I think we're in a unique situation, and I think we have a great opportunity.
Well, and the inventory thing too is also great, because if you look at the resources we have, we've never compiled those things. And in my head, I can just think of this myriad of resources we have that, we've got Hyderburks, and we're already doing some things, but imagine what we can do now if we integrate all these, our different interested parties and get involved with this. We're already taking in a lot of events already, but I just look really excited about what we can do being organized like this. So yeah, again, thank you for all this.
Thank you.
It's going to be fun.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Anything else? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
I would like to personally thank Otis Phillips, Laura Canada, Melinda Kiefer, George Holford, and city manager Jim Shipley. That was a lot of work. I was there, but not as much as you guys were. That was a lot, that was a lot of work that you guys put into that, and that really solidifies us as a sports community. And this is nothing against T double S double A, but I had the feeling when we went down there to pitch the basketball, that maybe there were some of them, they weren't ready to take that next step with us. Well, yeah, you guys did good on football, but you know, maybe you don't need to take on the basketball too. And, you know, I want them to know that we can do that, and we're more than well-equipped to do that. So hopefully we'll get that this next time, along with many other events as well. Any marathons or anything we need? Anyway, anybody else? I think we have some visitors again. Would you guys be a part of the journalism class? Thank you for coming again. Is this punishment, or you guys are... We welcome you back anytime. We like to have an audience, so. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to remind everybody that it's Tennessee Tech's homecoming, and Tennessee Tech is one of our great pride and joys here in the upper Cumberland. And also, I think the Tuba Ensemble is having an anniversary this Friday night at Wharton Burger Auditorium. So as usual, everything, there's lots of stuff going on. Make sure that you get out and celebrate. And I understand that we had a great flash mob here on Monday night for Halloween, so Cookeville's getting good news.
I want to bring up, since it was mentioned, the Blue Cross, that is going to be in less than a month. That's going to be December 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. And they're going to need volunteers, so people out there that, you know, want to get involved, it's a great way to showcase our city. It has been a win-win situation for us. There's probably 25 or 30 teams throughout the state are talking about destination Cookeville on 1st of December, so please get involved. It's a great way to participate in our community.
Yes, journalism students. A couple of things, the Boo Bash was Monday night, which trunk or treat was up here at Methodist Church, also with the flash mob, which, when she said mob, Chief Terry broke out in a sweat. But anyway, and the costume contest at the amphitheater, and also Dogwood Park, they had the fountain going, there was a lot of people strolling back and forth, and I heard there was about 4,000 people here Monday night, so that's a good thing. Hopefully that will continue to grow. Also, since we've been here last, I think we had a half marathon that some of us participated in.
We did.
And we're all alive.
We are.
We all survived.
And our vice mayor, Larry Epps, had a great number.
You had one, did you have one of your better times?
I almost won the race, but...
That's what I thought. Congratulations.
He was running away from me.
Yeah, he, he slowed down because he did, he thought it wouldn't be fair for a vice mayor to win a, to win the race, so.
He was afraid I was going to catch him.
Anyway, we're, we're all alive, and I appreciate everybody that came out in support of the race. There was over 500, well, about 500 participants, pretty close.
It was a great day.
It was a good day. But anyway, I appreciate everybody that came out.
Yes, I want to thank Melinda Kiefer for providing us with the quarterly report on the nonprofits. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
That is great.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We've had a gentleman here tonight that has made some derogatory comments about a city employee. Clyde Presley is one of our, he's a good employee, he does a good job. Mr. Goolsby is confused. As far as I know, he has never asked for an appointment with me. And I started not saying anything, but you just don't get up there and just start cutting somebody down without them having a chance to rebut. So I just wanted to get that said. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. This meeting's adjourned.